You move that once a piece of paper.
Stop picking on Daryl, all right?
I can change the last minute.
That's gonna start to look like mine up there.
That's actually not.
It's a starter's.
That's actually not possible.
We are live.
How did the game start? For once. Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Appeals meeting for July 9th, 2024. If you could stand with me for the pledge, I will leave you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God indivisible, in the liberty and justice of our common purpose. I would like at this time to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of a fallen officer named James and Ritter of the Cleveland Division of Police who was shot on July 4th while serving for debt relief in Ohio. He would join the police. He was a Webster native. Join me for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, at this time I would ask that we move to public comment, open that portion of the meeting, and after that we will move to regular business, which will include organizational meetings. Now the floor is open for public comments. Thank you, we might progress to court. Okay, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move now to regular board business, which first of all is the 2024-2025 organizational meeting. The organizational meeting, we have a number of appointments and of course motions to make. First of all, I would announce that this is not an appointment that needs a vote, but it is one that simply needs my deputy to say, yes, I will act as mayor when I cannot fulfill those duties. And I wish to appoint Jerry Toledo Jr. again as Deputy Mayor. And now we would move to board designations. First of all, I would ask that a motion that the candidate for National Bank be designated as the official bank of the Village of Webster, and also designate the Webster Herald as the official newspaper of the Village of Webster.
I'll make that motion.
Who should we do all in favor? I'm sorry. Whatever your preference. Is that your preference?
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Next, we have mayor's appointment, subject to approval from the board. First, I would ask for a motion to reappoint Karen Buck, a deputy village clerk who was pending on July 1st, 2025. Secondly, a motion to reappoint Don White as village and zoning board of appeals attorney for a term that ends July 1st, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the retainer agreements with Don White. And finally, a motion to reappoint Mo Nicholson as chairman of the zoning board of appeals, a term ending again July 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, we have a historic preservation commission and historian. And first of all, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Peter Elder as chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission, a term that ends July 1st, 2025. And secondly, reappoint Lynn Barton as village historian for a term ending July 1st, 2025. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Following, we have the zoning board of appeals, a motion first of all to reappoint Chris Raywitz as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term that would end July 1st, 2029. Secondly, to reappoint David Whitlock as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, a term ending on July 1st, 2029.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, we have a motion for reappointments for parks and recreation committee. You all have made a motion to reappoint Peter Elder to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July 1st, 2025. Secondly, to appoint Josh Jurissa to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July 1st, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next, the Business Improvement District, which may have a motion to appoint myself, Trustee Lancy, and Bill Horrith to the Business Improvement District of Directors for a term that would end July 1st, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Ethics committee, I would like to reappoint, a motion to reappoint Trustee Toledo, village board member to the Ethics Committee for a term that would end July 1st, 2025. Next, reappoint Karen Buck. Or appoint Karen Buck.
Yeah, that should be appoint. Plus she did it from her other job.
Appoint Karen Buck, village employee, to the Ethics Committee for a term ending July 1st, 2025. And last, appoint Bill Horrith, who is a member, village resident, to the Ethics Committee for a term ending July 1st, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next, we have the general office. There is a motion to set the mileage reimbursement or authorize village employees traveling with their private vehicle to be 67 cents per mile.
Make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have for the general office, we have a motion here setting the village office hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The village office will be closed on Saturday and Sunday. The office will be closed for all governmental holidays, and we have a list of that.
Fifteen.
There are.
Fifteen. That's pretty good. Close. A second.
Make that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have a motion that following village of Webster policies, following our adopted and written in these sections of the policy manual and employee handbook, they shall be effective July 1st, 2024. The procurement policy, section 5-2M, and the fund balance policy, 5-. Back at. Reiterate then.
There you go, the fund balance policy.
I just, I thought you were supposed to, like, anything in the year up to this point, you were supposed to put in there just to make sure. We've done that in past years.
I think the procurement policy is the only one that state law requires.
Every year, right.
Every year.
Okay, so in the past years, I have put anything changed up to that point, so I can opt out if that's not supposed to be.
You haven't changed the fund balance policy from a month or two ago.
No, I just thought we were supposed to reiterate anything that's been changed.
Right. Yeah, you don't really need to do that.
Okay.
I made the motion to adopt the procurement policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next, we have village meetings. They are conducted according to section 2.2-2, the policy manual, regular village board meetings, which begin for Thursday each month at 7:00 p.m. Meetings of the zoning board of appeals will begin on Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m.
That would dis affect the voting next month, correct?
Yes. So they're moving from the Tuesday.
Tuesday to Thursday, correct. The village board workshop meetings will begin first or last Tuesday of every month at 6:00, but only as needed. When the event of the village board meeting is moved to a Tuesday, the meeting will start at 6:00 p.m. And obviously there are no exceptions, and that goes for today. So, and next, we also would have under village meetings, a change of the following meeting dates. Village board meetings, 6:00 p.m. start time July 10th moves to July 8th, 2025. September 11th of 2025 moves to September 9th. November 27th of 2025 moves to September 5th. And the village will have one meeting during the month of December, which will take place Tuesday, December 6th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Motion.
I'll make it. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next, we have a list of village board liaison assignments. They were made available and all of you, so I will not read them through, but if there is anybody who wishes to speak to them at this particular event, I will maintain that. But otherwise, I will put this motion before you to accept these board liaison assignments as they are currently running here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Oh, and the chair misses me. I wish to use on, yeah, during 2029.
2020 now?
Yeah. Can you take this back? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll see what Peter does.
He likes that. He likes that.
Next, almost the end of our annual organizational meeting. And this is a motion to authorize village officials and employees to attend to following conferences or training schools as listed below. This would be NITEON for training school, up to two staff members, Public Works School, one staff member, NITEON Annual Meeting, Mayor Highway School, up to two staff members, the BOA Conference, up to two staff members, and the MCF MIA Fire Inspectors Training, up to two staff members. Let that be further identified as members of the Mayor's Board.
Yes.
We'll have to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. In our next organizational meeting, there's a motion to approve the organizational meeting occurring on Tuesday, July 10th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., via to the regularly scheduled meeting.
See dates.
That should be, because this is a change. Putting that in date.
Isn't this supposed to be July 8th?
I'll change this up, sorry.
Yes. That would be Tuesday, July 8th, as we just approved changes to Thursday, Tuesday. 2025, 6:00. Motion to July 21st. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. That ends our organizational, annual organizational meeting. I would, before we move on, we have approved Don White as the lawyer for himself for the zoning board. He has a retainer agreement before the, I asked for approval, signed this for the retainer agreement for the zoning board of appeals to fulfill the Webster Village iflet fee of $4,290.90.
I'd like to send it to Peter to review.
Is he down? Don, you're being summoned.
Everybody's gonna listen.
They would like to discuss your.
Not a discussion, just a $2,000.
We can get a discount.
What happened to the fee schedule? Do you want to buy that?
Yeah.
Well, we'll come back to that. Oh, and separate. Well, that's your, it was, it was in my packet before the retainer agreement.
It was.
Yeah.
So that's why I wasn't.
Well, see, I don't have any agenda that includes any of that. Therefore, I can do it in any order I wish.
I understand that.
No consequences.
So anyways, I have a, I have a motion here for approval of the village to retain Don White and.
You already did it. It's right here, sir. It's in the organizational meeting.
Yeah, you have it.
You signed it.
You did? That was the number two.
It was part of the other motion.
It was.
The authorization there.
It's got, it's got automatically, it's got an automatic renewal for 15 years of agreement.
Personally, I felt like we're getting a bargain with Don White.
Yes, I do, believe. I definitely found it in the power.
And that's remaining, we have a motion to approve the, because we tabled this, the 2024-25 proposed fee schedule. It was modified and it was tabled until the two meetings.
The only, there is, there is one modification under residential fees, the one at the very top for the building permit. We should say for all residential construction, including townhouses. Because there was a, there was a discrepancy internally as to whether townhouses were commercial or residential. And the superintendent of public works, we use them to be residential. Correct.
People do it, huh?
So just so there's no question in the future about which, which, you know, whether it's 30 cents a square foot versus 20 cents a square foot.
Which pages that on?
Just the very first one, on the very first page, building department residential fees, just the very top, for all residential construction, including townhouses.
Got it.
There's actually distinguish, distinction between, let's say, five or twenty, what do you mean, apartment complex?
Right.
Which is residential or townhouse?
Well, I think apartments are different. An apartment is different than a townhouse. A townhouse is a single family home that just has a common wall to its neighbor. Whereas an apartment, you know, they're.
Common wall and floor.
Right.
But a townhouse doesn't have common floors. I had no bracket in that, though. Then it would be a proposal on accepting the fee schedule of 2024 with that change. It would be on residential fees, first item for all residential construction, including townhouses.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Toledo?
Oh, that's excellent.
Do you want to do all in favor?
No.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Valpene?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Hires? Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. You want to discuss?
Yes.
Remanaging Webster Initiative?
Well, that's next? No, I just want to get you higher and just sit here and listen to us.
Sure.
I mean, it's very.
Thank you, Matt Chatfield, what executive, executive director of Webster. I can have a lot of lines. I can project. It's okay. I don't know if anybody else can hear me. I'd like to give a quick, what I handed out to you is just a very brief, I would say a select overview of the Remanaging Webster Initiative, which is the Brownfield Opportune Area Program. I'm gonna, we're gonna bring in consultants in a month or two as the project, the full project is finally, you know, completed. The development of the master plan and the nomination study that will send to the state. So I'm gonna give you a select update on that project today. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview, what is the whole program? Basically, it's an area-wide revitalization planning study. Think of it as a mini comprehensive plan for a select area of the community, largely impacted by what we perceive as potential brownfield sites, potential perception of potential contamination. We selected a area within our community. Next slide, please. That focuses on a good portion of this tract complex. Basically, the spine of Phillips Road, west side of Phillips Road, east side of Phillips Road. It's about a five or six meter complex that we, the area that we focused on. We spent 18 months working towards the development of a master plan. What is the, how are we gonna reimagine this component of our community? There's a joint town and village effort. Next slide, please. That, and it's a two-step process. It does cross the municipal boundary, so we did have the town execute a memorandum of understanding that they are a party to the project, although they didn't contribute any of the 10% matching funds, but they are a party to the project. Because it crosses into their municipal boundary. So the two-step process is, we start with the plan first. We're almost done with that. That's the $200,000 funding award that was awarded in 2022. The study was largely completed in 2023. The next step is where we are today, right? We're preparing for these next steps. We are going to be submitting a request to the state for additional funding, for additional plans and studies in a much more detailed area, in specific parts of the study area. And we are eligible to submit a request for up to $500,000, which is a 90% funds from the state, 10% match from the locale. So that funding request is part of the Consolidated Funding Application Program, happens every year. This year, the funding applications are due July 31st. Next slide. We are to be submitting a grant, so a grant request for approaching $500,000 for three separate projects as stated in your resolution. The study area has all these little strategic sites, right? Little, larger. The focus of the broader study was what we call the West Complex, right? Eighty-Eater Site was identified, smack that in the middle here, is what we've identified as a location for future mixed-use housing, some multifamily housing, some retail, maybe some entertainment, right? That's gonna get mixed, new mixed-use neighborhood. We've also identified improvements that we want to see on Commercial Street, on Donovan Street, as well as other improvements, potentially on the Town Recreation Center, or the Town Rec Conference. Next slide, please. All of this stemmed from a market analysis that was conducted by professional economists and real estate consultants. They identified the largest single economic opportunity within the study areas for the development of new houses. It wasn't for the development of new office space, wasn't for the development of new industrial, wasn't for the development of a hotel, you know, potentially a restaurant associated with maybe some housing in a mixed-use area, but the largest economic opportunity was for housing. And a mixture of housing, next slide. All sorts of demand for housing, senior housing, single-family, multifamily, affordable. That's why the study, in large part, focused on that central hub of the Eighty-Eaters at the West Complex. Next slide, please. It's easier to see on your, easier to see on your handout, and even better, it'll be easier to see when I give you, you know, a more robust and large version. So, the real focus of today's discussion is commercial and Donovan Streets and the future of those. That's the funding request that we are gonna be putting forth on behalf of the village in the next few weeks, is for the design of, the redesign of those corridors, including some streetscape enhancements. Next slide, please. So the study identified a series of improvements to improve, for, to enhance pedestrian connectivity, and to also enhance the, just the look and feel of these corridors. They just tend to be a little forgotten, right? And I think they, a lot of the roadies themselves are basically past their, you know, their useful life. I think if anyone's driven down Diamond, especially, they would agree that the road is in need of assistance. So the next steps are to hire engineers and designers to further refine the redesign of these corridors, basically from the ground up. So, next slide, please. And also, in addition, some new information has sort of come to light as part of the Remanaging Webster Initiative. There was some additional budget remaining at the, pretty much the 90% mark of the study. So we went up, our consultants asked us, is there anything else that you would like to spend the budget on? Because in reality, the state already gave us the money. So we might as well spend the money as own him. So we're, it was only a matter of maybe about $17,000 of extra fund. extra funds that we, that we spent. One of those things that we did was we did some additional analysis, we hired a landscape architect to do additional analysis of this potential open space at the terminus of Donovan, of Donovan Park, South Orchard Street, and at the terminus of Donovan Park. And the idea was, how can we make this a new public open space? The master plan had already sort of set it aside as a public open space, but it didn't really have much of an identity. So, we asked the landscape architects to give us an identity for that, and what came of that was a park dedicated to, like, not really of the history, but interpretive element of the Hojek Trail, and the Hojek, and the Hojek River. Next slide, please. So, now I'll deliver this electronically. As part of this, these extra fees, we sat down with the landscape architects and identified some conceptual elements that we thought would be well-received within the community for this conceptual and potential new public park within the village. It would have a covered shelter, a playground area, and it would also have maybe some potential for conceptually interpretive rail cars, right? Actually, non-rails, but those rail cars though could be play equipment, climbing equipment, it could be a stage on which a band could perform, right? Just really thinking, how do, how do we use old rail cars and repurpose them for something within a recreational site? That would be the eastern component of that site.
You could put the old baggage depot on it next.
We could, we could probably recreate it in an interpretive way, right? Rather than, right, right, rather than, we wouldn't probably rebuild that exact structure, but you could, we could use, we could use components of it, or at least the actual design and the scale of it might, might work.
That pineal wood, who's gonna, we can't play.
So, we've been, there's been a lot of discussion for a long time about a recreational amenity north of 104 in this area, and part and parcel with the potential development of seven to eight hundred housing units on that West Complex site. The new neighborhood's gonna need new open spaces, right? To, to help support that part of the community. And this is kind of a concept that's being kicked around currently.
Traffic studies?
Traffic studies. We have not done a traffic study for that, no. Traffic study for what, Jim?
Just, it's a lot.
Oh, regarding, regarding the housing units?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would be the, that's part of the next steps.
Absolutely.
These are just some graphics of what that park could look like, go to the next slide. Right, that's an open space with those rail cars and, you know, just, right now it's just conceptual. But the idea, I think, and a lot of the reverse of the Hojek Trail on the left-hand side, Phillips Road would be behind you for now. Next slide. And just an initial, so, like I said, this is a very targeted summary of this project. The next steps of what we're gonna ask the state for is funding for up to, about two of, we're gonna, we have about $287,000 in transportation, engineering, and landscape architecture services associated with Commercial Street and Donovan Street. So that's the next request on behalf of the village. In addition to that, a separate project that's gonna be sponsored by the Town of Webster is for the extension of Toyota Drive and a new trail along Toyota. So Toyota Drive would then extend from Route 250 to Phillips Road. So that project, roughly $180,000, the ten percent matching funds for that is being covered by the town. They have already signed, they've already executed their, their resolution, their town board resolution to that effect. And then there's gonna be an additional third project that the Alliance is gonna sponsor that will cover the ten percent for a feasibility study for a performing, what do you call a performing arts center, but more of like a music concert venue on that West Complex. So just try and understand, is there any commercial viability to that idea? We've been approached by several concert promoters looking for a site, and the next step we're gonna undertake is, does it financially pencil out so that we can perform? That's, the Alliance will cover the ten percent match for that. So that's why your, your resolution reflects those other additional elements. But the only request from the village, from matching dollars perspective, if, was they were awarded the funding, would be roughly $29,000 in matching funds. And that would take that, those projects of Commercial and Donovan, all the way up until just basically pre-bid, pre-bid documents, right? We have, all the analysis would be done, cost estimates would be done, seeker would be completed, and then we'd have to find sources of construction funds, but all of that soft cost pre-development would be completed. I bounced around a little bit, I talked a lot. Any questions?
Do you submit in July?
Those, we hit the submit button no later than July 31st.
And what, um?
Just sufficient background for why we're submitting the grant.
And when are the awards supposed to be?
I mean, typically, the last slide had it, but typically, we submit in July, award might be in December, you know, price would start in the spring of '25. By the time you get on the contract with the Department of State, that would, that's the anticipated. Concurrent with that, we are also gonna be submitting the current document, the final document, to the state for their acceptance. So that's also gonna be taking place here in the next few months, to go through that process. Because they will not award us these funds unless they've actually accepted our study, our master plan. It is really more just a formal process, it's not that they're actually having to improve and, and modify what we've done, they just, we just need to go through the steps. But that can take six months alone. So we're gonna be doing some things concurrently prior to getting this, these two under.
Yes.
Pretty good, Matt? Is there soil like there, on the other, is there soil, you know, but the end is not like straight, but there is now.
There is no.
Yeah, soil, all that stuff.
We currently have no information that would indicate there is any, uh, contamination there.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So that will be, we change the order of this. So we just heard information regarding this particular project, and we have before we move on to an opportunity area of building Webster Board of Trustees Resolution. And it says here that we're as the Village of Webster Dean's that it is in public interest and benefit to enter into a contract that with now therefore be it resolved, that the Village of Webster Board of Trustees as follows, and with one bill as mayor, representative of all throughout the staff of all applicants on that is related to the state assistance under ninety, section ninety, nine hundred and seventy dash R of the general municipal law of the project. Secondly, that the applicant and co-applicants intend to complete pre-development activities to advance development of the following project, identified and described within the Reimagining Webster Brownfield Opportunity Area. A, design improvements for Commercial Street and Donovan Street. And three, the applicant requests funds in the amount of $258,300 for Project A above, representing no more than ninety percent of the total project cost, $164,700 for Project B above, representing no more than ninety percent of the total project cost, and $67,500 for Project C above, representing no more than ninety percent of the total project cost. For a total funding request of $490,500. Or the applicant agrees that it will fund the applicant's ten percent share of Project A, that the Town of Webster co-applicants agrees that it will fund the co-applicants' ten percent share of Project B, and Greta, its co-applicant agrees that it will fund ten percent, co-applicants' ten percent share of Project C. The applicant is actively finalizing the Reimagining Webster Brownfield Opportunity Area nomination study and will seek official designation of the Brownfield Opportunity Area by the Secretary of State on completion of the nomination, and that disauthorization will pay a place in respect immediately. So I will make the motion that we
To authorize the grant application that you just articulated.
I'll second him. There.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Balcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Correct.
Great application, Matt, and a very good first work, a lot of people together. With the Town of Greta, the which we're putting in.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. See you, Matt.
Bye, Matt.
Tomorrow evening, ask many board members possible to be here at seven o'clock for the project submission.
I won't be here, I can't.
It'll be too wet because you have craft beer tonight, so you might as well come here.
Yes. I'm going to Peter's or dinner room.
I'm going to.
I'll be, I'll be here.
Your motion for one, five, two.
Can you dirty corporations at your house?
He's pretty busy there.
That's true.
He's having a grand opening deck party.
All right, you gotta try, gotta answer that.
Oh, holding out a desk here.
Well, if you want, we'll do it.
All right. Next we have on our schedule, it changes from moment to moment. We have a resolution to approve minutes from the June 27th of 2024. You got something in front of you, I'll ask the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion, it's gonna change.
I'll second.
I, what?
Minutes.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Balcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Myers? Motion passes.
Aye. Uh, next we have a resolution to approve the coins and warrant. I had an opportunity to approve them, and I did not find anything that I would necessarily bring up, that hadn't been moved to.
Thank you.
Has the motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Balcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Myers?
Aye.
You know, she's a woman, she needs a really good word, it's a really good word.
Uh, we have already, I didn't report, so we will move now to budget modifications. We see quite a list of them. These are budget mods for the year 2023 to 2024. Looks like this is end of the year bookkeeping, and I do believe that auditors are going to begin, starting to begin taking a look at everything in the next week or two, so. Hopefully, we're necessarily leaving to go through them all.
No, we don't.
I'm just asking, making you aware of these budget mods and the reasons for them.
Thanks.
Probably will keep you reprieved with the bookkeeping that they will be coming to do. And if you're being very cagey, I do.
And I did mention to the secretary that you, we, she understands that you don't need to see the 100 to 100 or 400 or 400, but she just wants you guys to be aware of that, that's going on, so.
No, I think it's for the, I just say don't, we don't need no people, for the people.
We don't need to see it all, we need to see.
Yeah.
Yes, but last time there was something, Larry putting this on, and you know what that does, we actually need a whole.
I think you misunderstood.
No, I like, the last time, two meetings ago, that you didn't like, because technically you don't need to approve 100 to 100 or 400, like, if it's within that little thing, but she just wanted me to let you know, the reason she's doing that is so you have the whole picture.
Right now, you're speaking by initiative.
And there's, there's a big way of saying parents, she's a different, I think it's also.
But you do have to do 100 to 100 if they're different, the four digits, you know, if it's like an 8120 to an 8110, then you have to do, yeah. If it's 8120, 101 to 100, that you're both 8120.
Yes. Thank you.
We are just finally to believe. Asking if the part of, if you'd like to, if you'd like to.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying my language.
Check you off. Uh, I'm not gonna die. Anything that you would like to bring to us?
I really don't know anything other than to thank the board for the reappointment. I do enjoy working for the village and all of its staff, including the clerk.
What'd you say?
I'll, I'll take the tape back, what was it?
It was a compliment.
And as, as I think the mayor alluded to, we did have a meeting this morning where we're finalizing the, the agreement with Zerax, well, we gotta see if Zerax is gonna agree, for taking over their roads, Mitchell Dean, Orchard and Panama. We've completely, basically redone what they proposed to us, and hopefully by the end of this week, it's gonna go back to Zerax, and all of us will be interested to see how Zerax responds to it.
Exactly.
It includes the, the six, six or seven acres that, the park that you just approved the grand for, that, you know, for Zerax to give the village that land. So we'll see, which they're aware of, they're, they're aware of the department proposed for their, I'm not sure it sinks in that they still own the land, but we'll see.
It'll be very interesting how they react to the whole thing. Since the initial proposal that they made was entirely Zerax looking at what's to do on the local. Okay. Seemingly here it has been brought to my attention that the budget and mods, budget modifications can be corrected. So I am asking for a motion and a second to approve the budget modification.
You read on again?
And.
I'll make it.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
I'm switching.
I can buy Trustee Alito and Trustee Lancy. Trustee Balcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
One of these times, I'm gonna hurt myself.
I have that in.
Well, now, the moment we have been waiting effectively for, park in a public works.
Bated breath.
I kind of laid up, I don't know what they're doing now. The, we're doing a breath pickup this week, carnivores this week, and we're gonna be opening out again with the parade, blocking certain side roads, and with every vehicle we have, and maybe some borrowed ones, the towns, the highways would take the major intersections and four corners and ends of the parade, we're looking Daniel Drive, so it's a really good community effort to get all that done. I think last time we spoke, the gutters were getting wrapped up on Catherine Ford in anticipation of that Davie project that's scheduled, weather permitting, for bill at next Monday and date Wednesday. And Wednesday seems like a very popular day to pay for everybody in the county, so we're working on trucks with our partners right now.
Thanks for the block in the streets with vehicles.
Oh, really?
Yeah, oh, it's a lot of people out there, everybody's safe, let them enjoy the parade.
I would remind everyone that tomorrow night, there is a meeting for the year forward at seven o'clock, is a call for projects, so if anyone out there wishes to come in and follow through with the application, the call for projects, one or two, so that will be tomorrow night here, seven o'clock, until the border. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carry. Thank you for watching and attending, and we will see you in two weeks and two days.
There.